Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, July 22nd, 2024. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all. I hope everyone's having a great summer. I'd just like to remind everyone that this meeting is being videotaped and recorded for future broadcasts on Dartmouth Community Television, as well as their YouTube media channel, and more than likely, the Dartmouth High Media Club channel. Roll call, please, Ms. Genther.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Beth Coughlin.
Here.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
John Noons.
Yeah.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask if there's any public comment here this evening. We have allotted approximately 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. We just ask if you come up to the microphone. We ask you to be brief and keep your comments between two and three minutes on any of tonight's agenda items. Seeing no takers, we'll move on. I'd like to entertain a motion for the regular session minutes of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Noons, second by Mrs. Amorall. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. This time, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Thank you. Got a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Beckwith. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Abstentions, motion carries unanimously. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire for an exciting presentation.
Yes, I am actually very excited to present to you Mrs. Vosie and her team of rising sixth graders now, who I had the great pleasure to see present at Bridgewater State University as part of the Invention Convention. And I was, again, fortunate to be there, watch the work that Mrs. Vosie had done with her students, and I have to tell you, I was incredibly impressed, and immediately went back with Mrs. Paveo and said, "We have to invite them to school committee," because we wanted to be able to share the work that they had done with the greater community. So, Mrs. Vosie, if you want to invite your students up. These are our DeMello School students.
Hi, I'm Liz Vosie. I'm the Instructional Technology Specialist at DeMello and Christman Schools, and I had the honor and the pleasure to facilitate DeMello School's participation in Bridgewater State University's Invention Convention this year. We worked for a few months during recess. These kiddos went through an application process, and they gave up three out of five recesses a week to come and go through the inventing process and the reinventing process, which they're going to talk a little bit about in their presentation. I'm so proud of them and the work they put in, and our most exciting news is that they took first place in this competition. It was our first year doing it, and it was such an amazing moment, and I'm hoping that -- it's been a little while since we practiced, but they did such an amazing job with us, and I'm excited for them to present to you their reinvention, which is called Green Keys, and they'll come around and show it to you afterwards.
I just want to add that they won first place, and they were the youngest group who competed.
Yes, it was middle school.
I am Juniper.
I am Jamison.
I'm Anthony.
And I'm Mackenzie, and we are the DeMello Reinventors.
We are so excited to share with you our new invention. It is called Green Keys Grow and Game. Green Keys is not just an invention, it's a reinvention. We created a process for schools across the globe into recycling old keyboards into reusable learning tools for elementary students. If you take the Green Keys Challenge, you can take four old keyboards to create a classroom learning kit like this, that includes a sprouting greenhouse, two grow trays, a clipping propagator, and a fun board game.
We started this project with Global Goal 12 in mind to reduce tech waste, but as our project grew, we were able to support Global Goal 4, Quality Education, and Global Goal 15, Life on Land, as well.
We started our invention process by identifying a problem. We actually identified two problems in our school that we know that other schools had as well. When our school started using Chromebooks instead of desktop computers, we ended up with a lot of tech waste. The computers themselves could be recycled, but the accessories did not have enough valuable metals in them to be recycled. We also noticed that our first and second grade classes buy plastic cups and bags every year to learn about plants, and these end up in the garbage every year, too. We were hoping that we could -- there could be a way to reuse old tech accessories to make reusable learning materials for learning about plants. First, we had to see what we were working with, so Mrs. Vosie, our tech teacher, helped us take apart tech tools safely using a computer repair toolkit. We were surprised about the amount of materials inside of keyboards, headphones, and computer
Once we had all of the materials, we spent two whole meetings brainstorming ideas for using the materials to solve our problem. We tried out a lot of our ideas. We used many different ideas to make planters out of headphones, mice, and keyboards. One week later, only one of our ideas had actually worked, which was why we decided to focus on using keyboards only. This way, it would be easier for us to make an invention that is simple enough for other schools to use, too.
Once we decided to focus on the keyboard, we tried different designs to make a planter, but we couldn't get the beans and sunflowers to sprout through the holes in the keyboard. That was when we realized that we needed more than one tray. This also makes the learning more hands-on for the kids doing the project. We realized that we could use the plastic to sprout the seeds, and then use the grow tray for support once they have sprouted. We are also learning about propagating clippings, and had an idea to try that as well.
We didn't stop there. We still had a bunch of extra pieces, and we knew -- and we know that those first and second graders would love to play with the keys. We decided to make a game for kids to have fun and learn about plants as they're growing. We interviewed the first grade teachers and found out that they need students to learn about parts of a plant, the plant life cycle, and what plants need to live. We combined Monopoly and Scrabble to create the Green Keys game. Finally, we made this video to share with other schools, so we can take the Green Keys Challenge and use tech waste to make reusable learning materials, too.
Hi, we are the DeMello Reinventors.
Is your school getting rid of old desktop computers? Do you have boxes of old keyboards waiting to go to the landfill?
Are your elementary students learning about plants?
Well, we have a solution for you.
Take the Green Keys Challenge.
All you need is four old keyboards to create a classroom learning set that can be used year after year. You'll need a few other materials as well.
First, make sure the keyboard has no power. Then unscrew the screws on the bottom. Carefully pry the pieces apart and sort them. Be sure to take proper safety precautions, because some pieces are sharp and wear eye protection. Use a screwdriver to pop out all the keys. Take the bottom keyboard pieces and plug the screw holes with cutty or hot glue.
Place one tray on a windowsill. Carefully pour a thin layer of water over the tray to check for leaks. Fold three layers of paper towel and place it slowly on the water.
Once the water has been absorbed, spread out the bean and sunflower seeds across the
Take three layers of plastic from a keyboard and place them over the seeds.
Add water to the tray daily.
Let's make the grow trays.
Begin with the same steps from the seed sprouter, but once the paper towel is in place, use the top plastic piece from the keyboard and gently place it on top to make the propagator. You can now gather clippings to place in the propagator. Make sure the root is touching the water.
For the grow tray, flip the top piece upside down. Once seeds have begun to sprout, gently thread the roots of the keyhole in the tray. Make sure that the roots are touching the paper towel.
You can even glue the extra pieces together to create a greenhouse for your grow tray. Continue to water daily.
Let's make the game.
First, sort your keys into three categories: necessary letters, numbers, and extra keys. The necessary letters are letters that are needed to dispel the plant parts and needs vocabulary words. The extra keys can be used to make game pieces.
Once the pieces are sorted, take two silicone keyboard parts and label it with the two team names and vocabulary words. You may need the extra two as replacements, so hang on to them. Now just print the game board, and you are ready to play. We hope your school will take the Green Keys Challenge and reduce waste while supporting education.
Bye.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Oh, boy. I'm sure we probably all have some questions. That was -- I'm actually going to start first, so I'm going to -- That was a fabulous presentation, first of all, to all of you. Great job. I -- first thing I'd like to say is, as someone who is in the technology industry or technology field, I can certainly relate to extra computer parts in recyclable waste, and this was a great opportunity for all of you to find something that we're throwing away, right? And use it as a reinvention. I have to ask, was this a collaborative idea? Like, how did the brainstorming process start?
It was really like a collaborative idea. Everybody really, like, put a piece of, like, a thought of their mind into it, and then we created the greenhouse.
Well, I will just -- I will stop there, and I will just say this was a great job to all of you. Should all be very proud, and you should be very proud of your students. I'm going to send it down there to Mrs. Amorall.
Yeah, I agree with my colleague. This was just phenomenal. And what I was particularly impressed by is the clear level of interest and passion for this collaborative project. I was watching you each speak, and while you had your notes, you often -- it was as if you were just speaking to the crowd, like you were, with confidence and having not probably practiced in quite some time, because we're at the end of July, and we haven't been in school for some time. Such an impressive skill that tells me that you're going to do more of this moving forward. So, just so -- I would love for us -- can we share this? I mean, this is just incredible. I mean, we're sharing it tonight, obviously, but just really, I hope you're proud of yourselves, and I truly look forward to seeing you return to us as you get older and perhaps do something in middle school and beyond. It's very exciting, so congratulations.
Mr. Noons? Wow. I'm flabbergasted. For someone who has a black thumb type of deal, and everybody knows my computer skills that don't exist, that is something I would not have thought of. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, so my hat's off to all of you for being collaborative and coming up with this idea. I'm very proud of all of you type of deal, and, you know, your instructor. Question I have, and, you know, Mrs. Amorall kind of just mentioned it a little bit, but is this something -- I mean, you took first place, and that's great. Is that something like, you know, Mass Department of Education can put on their website to use, or -- and, you know, that type of deal, just saying, you know, here's, you know, or mass recycling, that type of deal?
We definitely wanted to share this publicly, because that's how good we felt that it was and informative, and there are other schools, I think, that could learn from this, for sure. But this was through Bridgewater State University and a partnership with Bridgewater, and our first year collaborating with them in this way, and I have to thank Mrs. Vosie for stepping in and working with this group of students to be able to bring a team there.
And in all seriousness, you know, to the students, thank you, because you, you know, take a step back, you gave up your recess time, which is important type of deal, to do something of this nature, so kadoos to you in doing that.
It's the last year of recess.
I know. Hold up. And parents and grandparents, congrats. Seriously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Ms. Beckwith?
Well, I think giving up the recess, with it being the last year of recess, is even more impressive, and I think this is such a brilliant example of the scientific process that all of you will be able to use in the future as well. And so normally, I don't think we learn this at this age, so that's most impressive. So tonight, you presented to all of us. How big was the audience at Bridgewater State that you had to present to, and what was that like for you?
Just come further to the microphone. Do you want to do it? Just talk about what it felt like to present in front of all those people.
The crowd was sort of on, like, the smaller end there.
It was like 50 to 60 people. It was a pretty -- think about all the kids, we filled up two of those whole rooms.
Yeah, but, like...
Let's just face it, they weren't intimidated by the crowd, clearly. There were quite a few students and adults in the space.
It was a bigger crowd than this. Was it intimidating, overwhelming?
Not really, actually.
And there were college professors who were actually rating your project.
Wow.
There was lots of other teams there, so it was a tiny bit intimidating by, like, and there was lots of older people there, like, older, like, in high school, like, giving their speech, and it was like, when they were doing the announcing, like, first place, second place, honorable mention, it was kind of like nerve-wracking to, like, or like, when somebody got picked, it was kind of like intimidating almost by, like, oh, no.
Very good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
They've said it all, but I must say, yes, the scientific process, finding a problem, like, what are our problems in the classroom, in the school, in the world? That question will take you through life, and it will lead you to even greater things, but I think it's unusual for people of your age to be doing such creative and important work, so thank you. And thank you for representing our schools so well.
Very nice.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
I just want to take a minute to thank first the parents, grandparents. Thank you for, like, coming out at the end of July, because we really wanted the opportunity for the students to come and share this with the school committee, so thank you so much. And thank you, students, and Mrs. Vosie's the best, so thank you, Mrs. Vosie.
For those of you at home, we're just taking a minute here as the students come around and show us their project.
So that's how you started it?
Okay, and all the different words and that type of deal.
Okay. Welcome.
Ah, okay, very good. What do you have there, my friend?
They did not try it.
Oh, you got some more of the roots and everything there. That's great. Okay, the wet paper towel, and that just -- yeah, that's fine. But that's how you grow it. You just wet the paper towel, and it just --
It looks healthy.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Can I see your game?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So did your whole class play the game?
Just rooted. It's starting to look cool.
That's the first step. Excellent. After all this time. Very proud of you guys.
Good job, everyone.
That is wonderful. Looks pretty good. And you did play this, right?
I.
You had a couple of --
Good job presenting.
Did you tell me you went down to first grade to do this, or?
Okay. That is great.
I thought so. Yeah. So good.
Okay.
It's great, first place. I love it.
Or sitting near the school committee.
It's amazing. Oh, yeah. It's rooted.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Very good hands.
Well, I want to thank all of those of you who came out this evening, and you're more than welcome to stick around and listen and watch the rest of the school committee meeting, but we certainly understand that there's probably a lot of other things you want to be doing, so you're more than welcome to stay, but feel free to leave whenever you're ready. So, once again, thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
You really can get up and go without -- We're about to talk about the budget, we would like you to watch it later, but other than that, please.
Next up, under new business, we have the preliminary, and yes, the preliminary FY '26 budget update.
So, and this is, you know, Mr. Kylie, I have to say, has been hard at work on this already. I just want to point out and remind not all of you, because I know you remember, but anyone who may be listening, that we did start budget discussions really early on, so we thought, last year, I think it was around November, and this year, recognizing that we're still concerned about the budget moving forward, and that we believe it's a good idea to have every school committee agenda, have a budget item on the agenda, and Mr. Aller and I talked about this, and we thought that was the right next thing, and Mr. Kylie thankfully agreed, and he already has some information to share with you.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. Tough act to follow, obviously. I didn't really reinvent the budget here, but hopefully, we can take a walk through where we are in this process, and I think, I guess, the importance of moving ahead so fast with this, there's certainly an urgency and a need for us to understand where we're going to be in fiscal year '26, fiscal year '27, what support we're going to need to meet the needs of students, and, you know, really advocate for that. So, I think that we started this off with a budget subcommittee meeting on June 24th. I thought a productive meeting, we had a lot of discussion, and I think at that point, we all felt that it was necessary to broaden the discussion, bring it to the school committee, get some more input, and bring it to the community, and, you know, begin, like Dr. Saban McGuire said, to address this on an ongoing basis at school committee meetings. So, I think that, you know, as we move into this budget process, well, I have a few slides talking about sort of steps, but I think we'll begin to look at maintaining the level of service. Always a good place to start. That's not really the key for us. We don't, you know, want to be just who we are, we want to be better, we want to grow. It's part of our strategic planning process that we're currently undertaking. We have a meeting Wednesday for the Strategic Planning Committee. We're continuing that process throughout the summer, and a plan will be in place in the upcoming couple of months. So, interweaving those initiatives and the strategic planning process into our budget proposal will be key. But we'll have lots of information coming as we develop that. We're sort of in the process of getting closer to a final strategic plan, and that will help inform our budget process moving forward. I think, you know, projecting things this early is challenging in a lot of ways. There's a lot of costs that we're just not going to be able to know, so there's going to need to be an understanding that when presenting preliminary budget information, it'll express our needs as best we can, but that it's really a starting point for discussions moving forward, and a tool to help us make strategic actions, and in terms of advocating for our needs. So, I think when we -- you have -- there's a tendency when you start talking about numbers with a budget, or even a preliminary budget, that that becomes, that's what you need, and it's set in stone. When you're starting really early, like, we're starting now, like, I'm still closing out fiscal year '24. We're not, you know, we're just getting underway into fiscal year '25, and we're already talking about fiscal year '26 and '27, there's some room for not so much error, but just reality happens, things change. So, we just got to keep that in mind as we move through this early part of the process.
And could I just stop you right there for a second, Mr. Kylie?
Of course.
So, just for the rest of the committee, myself and Ms. Coughlin, as well as Dr. Saban McGuire, Mr. Kylie, Terry Hamm from the Finance Committee was there, she was, I think she was the -- there was no one else on the Finance Committee there besides Terry, and there was a couple of people in the audience as well. We felt, and I think, you know, please interrupt me if you feel differently, but I think the general consensus was, after hearing, you know, what the potential of what FY '26 is going to look like, I felt, and Ms. Coughlin felt, that it would be worthwhile to start this process very early and at least get the weigh-in, have the full committee weigh-in in what we were, what was discussed at that meeting. So, I think it's really important that moving forward, that we have a finance committee that's engaged in the process. I think Ms. Hamm was very willing to listen to us, and she asked a lot of great questions, and we just asked that we're going to continue to have budget subcommittee meetings, and we want to make sure that anyone that's interested is there and engaged in trying to understand where the school committee and the school district is coming from. Anything else you want to add?
I agree, and encourage the Finance Committee to continue to send representatives and be involved as far as asking questions as we go along, rather than saving them till the end product.
Thank you both. And as I'm going through this, if you have thoughts, questions, please inter- And as I'm going through this, if you have thoughts, questions, please interrupt. It'd be better if this was sort of a conversation, discussion, more than just a presentation. So, I'd be happy to talk about anything as we go through this. So, some of the key factors, I mean, some of these are always the key factors for us. Obviously, staffing is our largest expense. We have the additional sort of complication of all of our collective bargaining agreements are expiring at the end of fiscal year 25. So, and none of them have been yet negotiated for fiscal year 26 or beyond. So, that's certainly a complicating factor. In addition, on staffing, we have very few retirements in fiscal year 24. Fiscal year 25 looks like very few. The reality is that with the labor market in its current state, even if you do have retirements, you tend not to save a great deal in terms of replacement cost of staff. It used to be that you would, you know, hire newer teachers, less experienced teachers. There's really a very limited labor market for most of our positions. So, it's unlikely that that, you know, will really result in anything. And certainly, given the low number of people that we expect to retire over the next couple of years, that's not going to be a way to really help us. Transportation costs are going to increase at a greater rate than our budget's going to increase. And the one way that we can influence that is by trying to be cut... Well, there's two ways, I guess. Either trying to become more efficient, which we're actively working on. We went from 31 routes to 30 routes last year, in this, this last year, and we're trying to drop that down another route. In some cases, it does result in kids being on the bus longer. So, that's something we're very careful about. We have students in our district who are on the bus for an hour, both ways. So, two hours of their day can be spent on the bus. That's not what I would prefer, but that's the current state of affairs and, you know, we have a very big town and that's sort of the result of that. So, but we are trying to be more efficient. I mean, the other way to potentially save is to provide less service. Now, that's obviously not our goal. We want to maintain the level of service that we can for the community, but, you know, when the time comes, it's certainly something to discuss. Provide less transportation to less people is one option. I don't particularly think it's a good option, but...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there some law that we have to transport all students that want transportation or a certain subset of the population? What's the law involved in transportation and what we need to provide?
At some point, I'd be happy to share the specifics in what we do versus what is the legal minimum. It depends on the age of the kids. It depends on how far they live from the school. So, yes, there are laws that regulate that. So, there are students that we transport that are, we're not legally required to transport. What we often consider is the fact that there are very limited sidewalks in this community and it results in some fairly, you know, challenging spots in town. There's a lot of traffic in town, certainly close to the schools. They tend to be more populated areas. And so, those are decisions that could be made, but typically what are the decisions that we've made are what's best for students, safest for students. And so, but there are students that we transport that we're not legally required to transport. So, something to, you know, at least make people aware of. Enrollment, you know, we're seeing a slight decrease again projected. We've got the NESDEC projection that was just done based on cohort survival method and building permits and births and, you know, is, appears to be a pretty good estimate based on where we are. And I won't, I won't jump in on Dr. Seb Maguire's kindergarten update, but it looks like it's, looks like it's pretty accurate so far. So, we'll continue to monitor that. Utilities, another area of the budget that as a percentage are going to go up significantly more than what our budget base is going to be. Rates are going up on gas and electric. The way we're trying to combat that is through efficiency improvements, but we have a limited pool of money to do that. It's basically within our budget, you know, within... So, if we think we can save enough, we'll try and do something. For instance, we're attempting to replace the lights in here and in the front lobby in the school, which are not LEDs, are, you know, somewhat antiquated. And while we're renovating the library, we're going to, we're going to work on that. It'll save us some money. Special ed tuition, we won't know this for a long time, what the rate is. It's set by the state. We have no control over it. The other thing is that it's really not possible to project accurately what that expense will be this far ahead of time. You know, there are students whose needs we do not yet know and some students who aren't even here yet. So, there's a lot to that. What we do is try and use a best estimate based on historical data and we'll continue to do that. I would be surprised if it's not at least the 5% increase that the operation, state's operational services division, you know, enacted last year. I'd be surprised if it wasn't at least that. The other big key factor is how we use the reserves that we built up because of the ESAR money. So, we know that we're using, planning to use approximately $1.8 million in school choice revolving funds in fiscal year 25. We know...
1.8, you said?
1.8 is what we had planned on in our budget process. Most of that is all recurring costs. So, those are still going to be needed in fiscal year 26. How we fund that, I think, is, you know, part of the discussion that we need to have. We'll talk about that in a couple of minutes here. So, it's not just all about us, right? We know that there's a lot of things going on in the community. For example, the town administration is changing. As we move into this process, we've already had some preliminary discussion with the interim town administrators and we'll continue to work with them as we develop preliminary projections. And they are more than willing to do that at this point. So, you know, we're hoping that that can be a collaborative process. ESAR, I mean, it's no surprise that that's, you know, a big factor here. It's expiring September 30th. The biggest issue that we face with that, so we've sort of taken care of part of that with our use of school choice funds temporarily in fiscal year 25, but the other big issue that we haven't yet tackled is that the remaining funds in ESAR that we will be completely spent of are funding all our summer programs right now. So, all of our current summer programs are being funded with ESAR funds. And actually, there's not even enough in ESAR to entirely fund those. But what that means is that we have a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of summer programs that we're currently operating that we do not have a place in the following fiscal year 26 budget.
And the summer programs, for at least summer, the children are mandated by the state?
Some.
Right.
Some are, some aren't. So, another...
So, we definitely need to find at least some of the money.
We need a source for some.
And it has been great for all the kids, so it would be great to find.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've been committed to, you know, providing opportunities for kids and I think it's been great. We've been doing that, you know, throughout...
I am going to share the number of students that are participating in summer school.
Terrific. Oh, great. So, something to consider as we move forward, yes.
Does that also, you know, these summer programs, is that also like the credit recovery in there also?
Yes. Yes, it is. So, it spans our entire grade range and, you know, lots of kids with varying needs. So, it's good that we have the funds there to take care of that right now. That was part of our budget planning. But 26 is going to come home to roost. We got to, we got to do something with it, right? So, that's something to consider. You know, in terms of state and federal funding overall, it's way too early and so we would, you know, project kind of stagnant funding, which I think would be probably best case scenario in the end, unfortunately. So, we'll work with that as we develop the budget further. The other things, lots of other things that are impacting the town budget, but some of the big ones that, you know, we can all relate to are health insurance, town support of other school districts is also a, you know, a concern. And how the town decides to fund capital improvements also has a, you know, plays a role in this. The town having placed a significant amount of money in long-term capital reserve fund, which I certainly support long-term capital improvements, but it does mean that funds are being used for that. So, all of those things will sort of shape our budget moving forward.
Chris, and there's no, and there's nothing in here with regards to that quote-unquote 40-year capital plan that the towns have been working, the town along with us has been working on.
That's right. I believe Tom Meeting placed a million dollars in...
In the staff fund, yeah.
Right. In a stabilization fund for long-term capital improvements. I think, I think saving for long-term capital improvements is a good idea, but I, and certainly the collaborative nature of the long-term capital planning process, I think, has been excellent. And it's been a good example of what we can do in town when we're working together and thinking a little, you know, outside of the present to solve problems that are going to be an issue for the entire community for the next, you know, 50 years. But that said, those are funds that, you know, we have to, we have to consider, the town has to consider. It's really not for us to directly have any control over those. But they play a role in the overall funds that are, that, you know, might be available. So, I've tried to summarize this. What I think the FY26 budget will show is that we, there is no way we will be able to adequately fund our operation based on what the town's operating budget is going to offer us. Yes.
Could you back it up a slide, Mr. Kylie?
Of course. Yep.
So, to me, I'm just trying to put it in simplest forms for those residents who may not, may or may not fully understand the way towns work and operate, right? So, Massachusetts has a Prop 2 and 1/2. That simply means that we cannot increase, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, we cannot increase property taxes more than 2 and 1/2% without an override.
Plus new growth.
Plus new growth. Exactly. And new growth has been, I don't want to say stagnant, but it hasn't been, it's not back years ago when we had a South Coast Hospital and Hawthorne Medical building, a lot of new health buildings off of Font Connor Road. So, it's, to put it into perspective, I don't know, 500,000 to a million dollars in new growth, maybe? Is that, is that reasonable?
It's in the range.
Okay. So, with that, so we have 2 and 1/2% and then a very small amount of money for new growth. Each one of the, if we look at this, in, you know, we start with health insurance. Health insurance typically goes up more than 2 and 1/2%. Bristol, I don't know about Bristol Aggie, but I know Greater New Bedford Vocational Technical High School goes up more than 2 and 1/2%. I know that Mr. Kylie brought up for our out-of-district tuitions, was set by the state, goes up more than 2 and 1/2%. Transportation is going up how much?
Set to go up 10%. The actual daily rate of regular ed bus transportation for fiscal year 26, set to go up 10%. Again, we'll attempt to offset that with whatever improvements we can, you know, make on an efficiency basis, but it's somewhat limited.
And I'll finish up with, we know that based on data that this administration has collected, that we are categorically low with our salaries, lower than average. And we're lower, I don't need to reiterate, but I will, we're in the bottom percent of spending across the state. So, we have a structural deficit. Thank you. I just wanted to just...
One thing, and one thing with Bristol Aggie is the new buildings and capital improvements that they did a number of years ago, that they blew buyers because of a blizzard type of deal with their vote and everything else. So, again, we have, you know, no say in that, that number.
That's right. So... No, certainly a good point.
Right. Both New Bedford Voc and Bristol Aggie include physical plant costs that the town has assessed. So, yeah, that's true. So, when, you know, I think that it comes down to, in terms of fiscal year 26, sort of a, the key decision point is, relates to use of our reserves. And there are some variables, obviously, we're just starting fiscal year 25, but it's possible that we will have approximately $1.5 million remaining in the school choice revolving fund at the start of fiscal year 26. So, if we were to take a similar approach in solving a permanent problem with temporary funding, really one-time funding, it may be possible utilizing, we have some money in preschool revolving funds and the school choice revolving fund to get through fiscal year 26. Now, I'm not asking you to make that decision right now, but I think that it's important that we start to discuss this and because, again, we're not going to have enough money. So, we're going to have to, there's only so many options. One would be to strategically use reserves that probably will only be a one-year fix. So, it would take us through fiscal year 26. In some ways, I think that we would be better positioned if and when we move forward for, to express the need for an override in the community. I think fiscal year 27, in my opinion, is a more favorable time to ask. And the reason I think that is we'll have employment contracts in place, which we will not have during any fiscal year 26 budget process. The town administration will be settled in and I think their role in a potential override is key. The strategic plan will be in full operation, not just having been finalized. It'll also give us an opportunity to better communicate our needs, give us time to communicate to the community and advocate for what we need. So, to me, while it's extremely painful to say, okay, we're just going to use up all our savings and try and get by for another year, I think that it might be the best way to proceed and target fiscal year 27 for an override. That would mean that I think I have to prepare both the fiscal year 26 and 27 budgets at the same time, which means that 27 will be way less accurate, right? It's just going to be. But, but, you know, for discussion purposes, I think we need to, we need to have that in place so that, again, they won't be final numbers, but they'll be available for strategic decision-making. So, that, I think, is kind of the key decision that we're going to face in fiscal year 26 as a... year twenty-six as an administration and, you know, working with you folks. I think that's going to be key.
I guess, like, I just want to add, even with that, we will have to have discussion about the immediate impact of even utilizing those funds to carry us through. Because remember, we didn't go through this year unscathed. We did lose positions. And so that's something that we have got to be really transparent about, because I think that the public at, at one point, and I don't know why, but I think some of the way, we want to clearly communicate that there were still challenges with the budget that was actually approved last year. And we lost nine positions, nine, over nine positions.
And I totally agree with that. And on your first slide, you talk about level services, and I think that that is deceptive in light of what you just said, but also, over the years, we have lost positions. We have not refilled them to keep our budget down. So this idea of level services is a fallacy. We're not, that's not what we're doing. I would love to do that, and I would love to increase our, our services, but we really shouldn't use that level services moniker.
So that's, that's a really good point, that we actually, one of the people in the audience at the Budget Subcommittee Meeting was Mr. Silver. He's the one that spoke up at the Springtown Meeting in support of the schools. And, you know, he, we used a good term, we talked about incremental losses. So over the years, there were a lot of small incremental losses, not just, I consider nine, nine-point-oh FTE, more than just, that's, that's a good-sized number. But even leading up to that, there's been lots of other, over the years, incremental losses. So he was very, I gotta say, Mr. Silver was very engaged, and I actually, I thanked him for his concern at the, at the town meeting as well, Ms. Coughlin did. So I guess my question is, I don't know if anyone here, I'm, right now, I'm currently not a town meeting member, I just don't have the time. But if we were to look at utilizing, and, you know, and I only want to spend a few more minutes, because I know we're going to be talking about this all year. But I guess my only question is, and then I'll turn it over to someone else, is if we were to reduce reserve funds and look for a possible override, or, you know, express the need for a possible override in the fall, in the, for FY twenty-seven, would we look to, in my head, when would that be scheduled? Like, what, when will we have to go in front of the town meeting? What's the timeline, I guess?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that if you, well, obviously, to get to successfully achieve an override, you need a ballot vote, right? So sort of determining the ballot vote and determining the willingness of the town to have special town meetings, or if you work within the existing structure, that sort of determines.
So backwards design?
When you, yeah, you have to go backwards from there. And so it's, you know, obviously, if, if it's April ballot that you're looking for, you need to, you know, you need to have a town meeting prior to that.
That's, well, that was just at the back of my mind. So you're right, you're right, Mr. Kylie.
Which would mean a special town meeting, I would assume.
Because the fall town meeting, we wouldn't have enough information at that point.
It's possible that you could do that. It's a, it's, it's a long time between the two, but it's possible.
It's just that every special town meeting does cost the town more money.
It does. It does.
And it's the Board of Selectmen that have to call it. So the Board of Selectmen have to call the special, any town meeting, type of deal. So if, for whatever reason, they would decide no, then, you know, we're dead in the water. But that's a story for another day.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, I, I did. I was going to ask about the, what the status was on the twenty-six budget as to, you know, what we were looking at, like, for a percentage or that type of deal. But it's obvious, and again, I got it. We're three weeks into FY twenty-five. You haven't closed out twenty-four. FY twenty-six is, you know, forty-nine weeks from now.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, I'm good with that. I understand. But it's, it's a process.
And, and it is. And, you know, it takes a lot of work to do, and I'm committed to doing that, and we'll do it as fast as I can to, to get us moving. So it's, it's on my radar. I certainly understand the urgency and, you know, got to balance a few things along the way. But, but yeah, we'll, we'll get it early, like, much earlier than last year, so.
Just a, a couple more things. I apologize. Number one, I mean, and again, I know I made this comment earlier in this year's, this year's budget, that we were starting to put numbers together before we even had state numbers, type of deal. So we were really, you know, grabbing at straws, type of deal. But, so that really makes it real interesting. You can sit there and say, well, if we get three percent or whatever, that's fine. But my other serious question becomes the fact that if we start taking all of our reserves, school choice, full-day kindergarten, preschool, you know, fifty cents here, dollar, that type of deal, we could really set ourselves up for a major disaster, type, type of deal. Yes, we get, you know, school choice funds every year, but that's a year-to-year process only because of the fact that at some point in time, this committee could, could say no, and they will dry up. So, but that's, am I missing something down the line here?
No, I, I don't.
That if that, you know, and if, you know, we didn't get an override, we could, you know, never mind losing nine, we could lose.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's where we are right now. We're just lucky that we have the reserves, the revolving funds. I mean, we're there. We would have lost dozens of, of staff. And we still lost net of more than nine, which was not what we wanted. So, yeah, I, I think that we're limited in our ability to weather the storm, but I, I think we have a little more ability to weather the storm. And, but it is going to put us in a position that will be challenging moving forward.
I apologize. I got one more. I apologize. I got one more. Do we have any update on crossing guards?
Uh, so.
Between middle and.
I, I believe that the police department will not be staffing crossing guards.
Okay.
So what we did last year, which was an additional burden for the school district, was we advertised and hired a staff member to work and basically cross middle school students at the top of Hawthorne and the intersection of Hawthorne and Slocombe, because of the obvious risk. So we had originally, when, when the police department let us know that they, they, they were not able to find people, was the original issue, and then expressed to us that they weren't planning on continuing it, based on, based on that inability. We originally said, okay, well, we'll bus everybody. We'll offer busing so that no kids have to walk, which we did. And then we found this, this, you know, relatively economical solution of hiring an existing staff member to work a little early and, and a little late every day. It's worked pretty well. But again, it's money that, you know, we're, we're, we're supporting that position. So we'll continue to do that.
Thank you. I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So did the crossing guard, when it was under the police department, the monies came from the police department?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and there may be some ability to sort of slide that money to our department for next, for this, this upcoming year, but it's going to require a little negotiation.
Sure.
But the police, I think, are more than willing to, to support us in that way. I think, you know, town administration, just got to work with them on that.
And I will say that they are, they certainly have been, because I see it and I've heard about it, enforcing speed limits on Slocombe Road.
Good.
Yep.
I've seen them out there and also on Hawthorne Street, that type of deal, so.
I, I just had, I'm thinking about where out-of-district, especially transportation cost is in the budget. And I just wondered about the possibility of, I'm out of the loop in terms of how many kiddos we have that we transport in that way, but partner is, with our Tremblay, which most districts utilize, local districts, right? Just thinking about, oftentimes, you've got one kiddo on the bus going all the way to Providence, whether it be Meeting Street or, you know, other schools. Is there any appetite or any pathway to potentially partner in a way to have some inter, intercity agreement where we would perhaps collaborate with New Bedford or Fairhaven to partner so that maybe three of those kiddos could go on one bus if they're all going in the same location? Any discussions with that?
Yeah. Interesting. A few years ago, just pre-pandemic, we had a meeting of my, like, local counterparts, in which we talked about that. And basically, we mapped out the, the state, actually, through the, I can't remember which organization, State Transportation Organization, I can't remember the acronym, but actually helped us map that. And we found out, you know, where everybody is, what time they need to be there, what age they are. It's tricky, and it has to just line up perfect. And Dartmouth's super big, right? So if, like, it's somebody from New Bedford heading towards Providence, if it's in the north end of Dartmouth, it might work. So it's always, it's always a little tricky. But, yeah, I mean, I would love to, we haven't done it since then. We did take a look at it. And, you know, we're always willing to collaborate with other districts. It is a good idea.
I'm sure the bus company would also be open to it because of their limitations with staffing.
They're very short.
Yeah. I love Tremblay's.
When they have someone going somewhere, they will call us and say, do you want a bus here?
Yeah. I love Tremblay's. They're fantastic.
Yeah. They're a good partner with, with problem-solving, those things. And they're very short on staffing right now. So, yeah, they're happy to help in any way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Well.
Mr. Kylie. Like, yeah, thank you, Mr. Kylie.
Well, I have one more slide.
Oh, we have one more? Okay.
So this is, this is real brief. There's lots of next steps. None of these are in order, because there is no order. We have to do a lot of things. And, you know, it's, obviously, I need to work on the budget itself. We'll have more Budget Subcommittee Meetings. We have one scheduled in August. The strategic plan, like I said, we're meeting Wednesday, so we're continuing to, to finalize that. You know, meetings with our administrators in-house is always important to, you know, get, make sure we understand what, you know, the, the needs of students are. And, and, you know, working with, you know, our interim town administrators and having more discussions with you, all those things are things that are going to happen here pretty, pretty soon. And like, constantly, basically, until we figure this out. So I appreciate your, you know, willingness to, you know, participate in what's going to be a pretty challenging process, I think.
No doubt about it. Thank you very much for this.
So really, we have to decide if we agree with you that we should wait a year for the override. We should decide that pretty soon, not tonight necessarily, but because if we don't want to wait, if we don't want to use all of our reserves before going to the town, we need to know that probably by the end of August?
I would say. Yeah. I, I think that, yeah, I think that there would be a different sense of urgency if we're going to mobilize, you know, expressing our needs is what we're going to do. We're going to do that regardless, right? But if, if we are going to, you know, for, for community members to mobilize in support of our needs, and for us to go through the process with all the town departments and educating them and town boards, yeah, we got to move.
Okay. And then attached to that is the reserves and how much we feel we need in reserves. And I know, I, I mean, I don't know many other school committees, but there are towns that always set aside four percent. There are some, not towns, school, school budgets that set aside four percent, and there's some that set aside twenty percent. And that, I certainly don't have an idea what we should do. It doesn't seem like four percent covers that much. Like, if we get caught without enough money. And yet, twenty percent is a lot more money than we have right now in reserves. So I...
It, it's interesting. It's a good question. So the town's Finance Committee Reserve Fund, which is voted as part of the budget at, you know, Schedule A at town meeting, is about one percent of our budget. I don't think that it would be an unreasonable decision for the school committee to consider reserving maybe one percent of our budget to carry that, project to carry that balance in school choice moving forward. On the other hand, if we need it and we have to use it, so be it. If, if we continue to use school, to participate in the school choice process, and if we continue to make ourselves a destination that, that, you know, students want to, want to participate in, in Dartmouth education, which I think we will, then we get approximately six hundred and eighty to seven hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue that comes in during the year. So you have some leeway there, should something arise. But that's, those are important decisions, too. And, and I think as we, as we move through the decision, as really you move through the decision of, are we going to use the reserves or not, that's important to consider.
I, I was just going to make the clarifying point that in, in any discussions relative to a potential override, really, it's really back to, this is a town decision. This is all about the town, because the education is really the cornerstone of the future of our, of our town. And so just always being mindful to frame it as, you know, it's not the school's override discussion. It's, it's about revenue for the town to meet their needs, of which ours is quite critical. So I just wanted to add that little point.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. We'll look to schedule a, another Budget Subcommittee sometime in August, maybe, a little tentatively scheduled.
Yeah, I thought so. I was gonna say.
I'll shoot it out to the group.
I was, I was gonna, gonna say that, but, yeah, I believe we did. Okay. Perfect. Next up, summer facilities update, Mr. Kylie.
No, no, Mr. Kylie wasn't here last year, so I gave the facilities update, so.
Go for it.
No, I think I'm fine.
It's like it's me talking, anyway. Yeah, it's been, it's already been a, a super-busy summer, and as you can imagine, it's not the easiest job to maintain our facilities and grounds and buildings in, in this kind of humidity and heat that we've had. But I, first, you know, just got to say that, you know, our Dartmouth maintenance team, led by John Bernat, and our custodians in the buildings are doing incredible work, considering what we're dealing with. So that said, there's a long list I provided you of things we're working on, and those, those are sort of the highlights. And I won't go through every one of those, but I'll give a few, a few of them a little extra PR. So Dartmouth High School, we're working on library renovations. I don't know if anybody noticed anything, but we have a new rug here so far, and the place is mostly empty. And so we'll be doing a complete overhaul of this space. It was painted. We are going to have new furniture designed for, to meet the needs of kids now, not twenty-some years ago when this was designed. And we're, we're really excited about it. So that, that project is, is well underway, as you can tell. Auditorium sound system replacement, it's been on our list for a bit. We got, we have a capital improvement article that was approved a couple of years ago for that. It's actually happening. There's new speakers up already, new screen in there. There's new speakers up already, new screen in there. It's going to be great. We're super excited about that and that's, that's making really good progress. Tennis court refurbishment, we've gotten a lot done. Unfortunately, we probably would be done tomorrow, probably the next day, but it's going to rain for a couple of days. So we're pushed off a little bit, but it's going to be done soon. And it's, it's going to be a huge improvement. Roof repairs, we worked on roof repairs here with the Towns Finance Committee Reserve Fund had given us $100,000 to do roof repairs. We've been doing them since school let out and I think we made some headway with some of, some of them. I mean, it's a really short term, little patch type thing on a really big problem, but every little bit helps. I don't know if anybody noticed as they walked in that we are painting the building, the dark green on the, on the, in the hallways, in the lower half of the hallways. We've continued that throughout the whole front part of the building here and I think it, I think it really dresses it up nicely. Thanks to our painting crew who are three of our teaching staff who like to, like, like to paint and work all summer. They've been doing it for years and they're, they're awesome. HVAC improvements, that's sort of district wide, we're trying to do that. Sometimes this doesn't work as well as others.
Maybe in here?
Yeah, it's not very cool in here right now, sorry about that. Door access upgrades, we have a new swipe card system that will be in place hopefully for, for the start of school that we're working on. We're doing also another capital improvement article, the asbestos removal of flooring at the DeMello School and the Quinn School. It's already underway. We're working on the DeMello School first and then, and then we'll be over at Quinn. I mean, those are some of the big ones. There's lots of other things that we're doing to sort of fine tune. But those are, those are some of the big projects that we're working on and like I said, it'll, I mean, we're only like a month, a little more than a month before, away from the start of school. So we've got a lot to accomplish in a relatively short period of time, but we've got a good crew, so. I'm appreciative of their efforts.
Any questions?
I think that you're doing a great job of keeping the schools looking good and functioning.
Thanks.
And I just want to reiterate what Mr. Kylie said, John Bernat and his crew. I mean, they're just working around the clock and you can see the effort that they're putting in to make sure that. And I know Ms. Coughlin, you've been out visiting schools and sitting with principals in some of our older buildings. And you can see what goes into keeping some of the older buildings looking the way that they do, which is clean and inviting for when students return to school in the fall. Or in the summer, actually, as you just reminded us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, superintendent's update.
Okay, so after all that budget talk, I'm still excited to be here. And I want to say it was just a year ago that I was here as your brand new superintendent. And here we are a year later and I just want to take a moment just to say it has been just an amazing year here in Dartmouth. And despite the challenges, I'm thrilled to be working in the district with the folks here along with the school committee to keep the district moving forward. You heard Mr. Kylie talking about strategic planning and just, you know, the investment that the 37 people that are part of that team have made in that process has what I believe will turn into something that the community will be able to embrace. And not just the school community, but the entire Dartmouth community. So I wanted to say it's just, it's been a great year and I'm looking forward to this coming year, even though this budget talk does, you know, it is really heavy talk and it's talk that has to happen because it's real. But at the same time, there's still a lot of really amazing things happening in the district. You heard Mr. Kylie talking about his, the grounds crew, the, the maintenance crew, just the facilities folks. There are so many people working hard, including all of our teachers. I love to say when, especially young people, my niece just asked me what I do during the summer when everybody's gone. And I said, that's a really excellent question. I know it seems like somebody sprinkles magic dust and just the schools magically reopen. I just said this to somebody like a Disney movie. But there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to make sure that we're ready to open the doors. And you heard again, Mr. Kylie talking about the physical improvements and there are other things as well. I want to mention that I was at MAS, which is the Mass Association for School Superintendent Conference last week. Mrs. Poveo and Dr. Tevold joined me. I remember last year, I couldn't even remember his last name at this meeting and I had to look over at him and wait for him to tell me. So I feel like I've come so far. So, but I was, I was happy to have them both right beside me because we were able to network with certainly many of our colleagues across the state, attend breakout sessions. And what that conference allows you to do is really connect with some of the issues that are trending across the state. And certainly we're seeing impact here in Dartmouth. So I always feel like I walk away feeling somewhat recharged and I feel like I have, and again, glad to have the directors here in Dartmouth join me because then it's not just one person and we're able to share in, in what we've learned. And as I said, getting into the teaching and learning piece, as much as we had our three teachers who jumped right in and our painters, we also had a curriculum summit. I mean, they, I think our teachers took off one day, if that, and they were here on the 20th and 21st with approximately 65 educators were here at the high school. And what that allowed them to do was come together and work to discuss vertical and horizontal curriculum alignment, which is so incredibly well aligned with the work that we're seeing that is coming or are being recommended through district strategic planning. That idea of vertical, horizontal alignment is something that we can see that people are invested in. We talked about the importance of summer programming. Well, I think that incredibly critical. We have several summer programs running at the high school. Currently, we have, and those programs take place here regardless, pre K to 12. We have 169 pre K to 12 students who are enrolled in E S Y programming. Mrs. Coughlin, that was something that, that you were referring to. We have another 112 K to five students who are enrolled in our summer academic programs. And so at the end of the summer, we're happy to give you an update on how those programs are going. But I know that, that they're going quite well and our students are really happy to be here. And as you said, we're also required to offer programming for other of our students. And then somebody asked about the recovery program. Well, that's happening here at Dartmouth High School and that's really important. Some people refer to it as summer school, but it really is a time for students who may have fallen behind for whatever reason to catch up, to build some critical skills while, while we keep them on track for graduation. And I think that that's really critical with high school age students to always offer them those opportunities and that I think the high school has been really committed to. And we have about 75 of our Dartmouth High School students who are here participating in those programs. So beyond that, we have robotics. We have robotics students and their coaches who have done their annual week long camp for middle school students. And that is led by our high school students. So again, you hear, you know, that's where you see evidence of this vertical articulation. And you can see the middle school connecting with the high school folks to start to even plant those seeds in our younger students and get them up here at the high school where we eventually would like to see them obviously attend Dartmouth High School. And so very popular, robotic students were asked to host another week long camp. So obviously there's real demand for it in the Dartmouth School District. So all great things. Mr. Kylie mentioned kindergarten registration. It is still underway. Again, I hear that we're a little further ahead than in the past, but the, as Mr. Kylie mentioned, the enrollment numbers do really reflect what Nezdek told us last year. And we are seeing a slight decline in enrollment. Right now, we currently have 177 students who are enrolled for kindergarten. You know, different numbers in different schools, but as we've said all along, we'll be monitoring those numbers really carefully. I want to continue to thank Jen Machado. She's done a really nice job taking over that completely on her own this year. And so she has done a terrific job getting families and, because it's not just kindergarten, right? So there are, there are lots of students who are in families who thankfully are moving in and want to attend the Dartmouth Schools. So as far as HR is concerned, again, I, I always have to, even though she doesn't like it, I like to recognize Kate Gentner because the work that she does is really tremendous. The whole team, certainly at Central Office, is part of this. But Kate is really your HR person and she is onboarding a number of people as well as helping keep track of credits and where people are on the salary scale, all of those things that are really important to folks. And, and she pays such a great deal of attention and detail to making sure that she does the best that she can to keep us all on track. At this point, we have, as you know, we hired an early childhood director. We've hired a new administrative assistant over at the Potter. We've hired an instructional technology specialist here at the high school, a school adjustment counselor, a special education teacher and a guidance, a special education teacher at DeMello. And then a guidance counselor at the high school. We've also been able to hire two ESPs. We still have a number of positions that we are still in the process of interviewing for, both certified staff and ESPs. And I know I said this all last year and I'll start to say it again, substitutes, ESPs, those are folks that, you know, we want to continue to go ahead and apply to the position, positions because we do have a number of openings. So that's where we are with that. As far as climate and culture, we talked about and I just joked about the summer. You know, the pace is a little slower certainly, but at the same time, there's still a lot of really good work to happen. So we're right in the process of planning summer meetings and retreats as we plan to open school for 2024, 25. So how many days before? Somebody said it and I went into a little panic. You probably couldn't see it visibly, but that's what was happening. But Wednesday, we have our reconvening of our district strategic planning team. That's really critical work. We're getting closer to being able to share outcomes and hope to be able to do that, at least the preliminary sort of outline of where we are at our August school committee meeting. We're planning a three day summer retreat. August, we joke about retreats, right? So you know, there are some that say there are no treats in retreats. But we are very excited that we're going to be at UMass Dartmouth again. So that does make it a bit more of retreat like process. And we have one day with our principals and then two days with our district leadership team. Again, grateful to UMass Dartmouth because it's a fabulous space for us. And today I had the opportunity to meet with Vice Chancellor James Anderson from UMass Dartmouth. And I'm excited to build on that relationship because I think there are lots of opportunities that are going to come our way as we start to think creatively about the way UMass Dartmouth can really be an integral part of what happens here in the Dartmouth Public Schools. And so that's all I have. Thank you.
That was a lot. Yeah, that's great, no. Any questions for Dr. Saban McGuire? Continuing on, report of the chair, superintendent evaluation update. So Dr. Saban McGuire and I met a couple of weeks back and we had a discussion about what, what we have done here in the past in Dartmouth around the superintendent evaluation is, and what our, our expectations would be as well as what she is looking for and what she's looking at. So correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
So we're looking at right now, are we looking at the summative?
Yes.
We're looking at the summative part of the evaluation and I'll let you.
Well, one of the things that Mr. Oliver and I met about was the format for the evaluation. And so one of the things that we were able to do is put together, I was able to put together a PowerPoint that we'll see, will have the goals, my goals that you've already seen. So these are goals that you saw and voted on last year. And then also a slide for each one of the four standards. So there is a guide here to help you through that. But it's all, there are two ways you can look at it, through the PowerPoint or else there'll also be a folder that you can just go to, to click on and look at the evidence. I didn't say this, but I think that, you know, Ms. Gentner and I talked about this today is I would have her reach out to each one of you and set up a time for you to come in and sit with me to kind of go through it so that you can see how it's set up. It's, it's pretty simple and I think easy, it'll be easy for you to make the connections between the evidence and the, what I provided for you in the most simple format, I think. You've got a good chance to look at it.
Yes, and I will say, I personally, I know for those of you who might not be as tech savvy, but the Google, the Google slide or the slide or the embedded links, I should say, makes it very, very helpful. So as you're looking through it, you can click on it and it takes you right to the evidence as to what is being referenced, so.
Somebody shows me, I'll get there.
Well, that's why we're offering the, yes, of course. But that's for every, each one of you too, because I, again, I met with you all last summer. I'd like to have that opportunity again. And so this will be just one part of that time to meet.
And what are we looking at for when those might be taking place?
We actually did look at some dates today.
Just to give everyone an idea.
Yeah, August 21st, August 22nd, 23rd, but again, this is flexible dates, so if.
What's that, to meet with you or for?
To meet with me. I, you will get from, from us tomorrow, you will get the PowerPoint and access to the folder. And just, I just wanted to let you know, and it's the same thing that we've, that we've shared with our principals and our cult team, is this isn't meant to be an exhaustive process, not for me and not for you. And not for anyone on our team that we've, because I've asked them to use the same format and it's been pretty well received. One thing that I have said is you don't need to put 30 pieces of evidence. We're really looking at, you know, three to five pieces of quality evidence that demonstrate progress toward meeting either the goal or the indicators connected to the standard. But you will get those, that tomorrow.
Great, sounds good. Any other questions? Perfect.
I will just say, it's been, I love the collaborative nature of Dr. Saban McGuire and just the willingness to meet and go over items of concern and also just go over all, all the progress made today, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have a proposed change of the August meeting date. So I believe the original date was.
The 19th.
The 19th. And what, I don't have it in front of me.
We, we are proposing August 26th and the reason for that is, first of all, that's the first day, the convocation day and we thought that would be a nice way to kick off school committee as well and to be able to report out on how the convocation went and just to also update you on the strategic plan. And that will get us a little closer to being able to do that.
So one of the things, I, we've actually, I think, discussed this about possibly having meetings on the first day of school and we've kind of shied away from it just because of the, sometimes the intensity of the first day of school. But Dr. Saban McGuire is more than willing. She, she felt comfortable that that would be a good day to meet.
I was just going to say, because we normally haven't done that because of, as you said, it might, you know, right? So, but I mean, 26 works for me.
I'm perfect, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yep, I'm good. It's in there.
It's our first day with staff.
Right.
Students actually. Until Wednesday, so. Just so no students show up.
Oh, good, good.
For staff, yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Everyone good?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Great, thank you so much.
Just made the change. And again, I know we're not meeting till then, but if you have warrants, just send an email.
Yes.
And that August will be six o'clock? Or it will be early?
That'll.
Was five. It was scheduled, the August date was a five o'clock date. Five thirty.
Five thirty.
So it'll be a five thirty?
That'll be the last five, five thirty time.
That's fine. That's fine.
Perfect. And then we're looking for committee's availability for a school committee workshop date. So in September, we're thinking September, and just to, I don't know, did we do one last year?
We did, in August, I think.
So we're looking at September, you know, we're looking at, to me, one of the things, especially now that our superintendent has had, has some time to sit in the district and see what's going on and we have a new school committee member, one of the things that I think is really important, and I've attended some school committee workshops on this at the joint conference, is that the, the school committee should really have some goals ourselves. We should have some goals for the district as to what we would like to see achieved.
Yep.
And work that in and work with Dr. Saban Maguire and the administration as to how that can be accomplished. So that, that's one of the things I think is important with a workshop as well as just looking through agenda, you know, the, the year's worth of agendas.
Yeah.
And one of the things I always like to say is, or think about, is besides our regular agenda items, is there something that may be important to one of us? Because we, we can't, we, as, individually, we can't just be throwing out, hey, can we put this agenda item on, can we put that agenda item on? But maybe there's something that we can bring up at the workshop that you might be interested in or that you might be interested in. And we say, all right, let's make that, let's look and try to schedule that in. So I think that's a great way, if there's something that's of real interest, that may be a program that you'd like to see brought in to the, to the school district or something of significance, let's have a conversation about it.
What do we have, what do we have for meetings in September? Because I don't have those on my calendar.
Yeah, let me, I'm sorry.
I think I do. September 9th, September 23rd.
Okay.
And then October 7th.
October 7th, okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
So these could, the workshops can be, they don't have to be Mondays. Do you have any preference with availability? I'm thinking maybe the week of the, the week that we have off, the week of the 16th.
Yeah.
This would take place at the Bush Street Conference Room and.
Tuesday, the 17th? Does that work?
It's up to you.
I mean, I don't know what.
Yeah, no.
I don't know what.
Works for me.
What we've got for open houses in that, because I know there's open houses that pop in in September.
Right, I know, yeah, I don't have those.
Those on my calendar, I think. But we should be okay.
Tentatively the 17th?
Not that week.
Okay, thank you.
That works.
Okay.
So would we want, because what, what we can do is reach out to MASs.
That would be the next question, that would be the next, just check on their availability. Because we typically try to have MASs facilitate it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I think, you know, we could certainly touch upon superintendent evaluation again. I know some of us have been through it, but I think it'd be worthwhile to touch upon that and also just help ask them to maybe, and I can certainly reach out to them too, I don't mind.
Do it too.
Okay. Facilitate, you know, just facilitate the workshop.
Great.
Yeah, it's fine.
Perfect.
I'm good with that.
I'm not, I just want to say, I'm not sure who our liaison is right now because Mr. Hardy has retired.
Really?
Yes, or he's about to and he, so he won't be available, but, and there was, the reason that I know that is because we were just, there was just talk about it in our South Shore, in our Old Colony Roundtable. So as soon as we know, but last year, we actually had Glenn Kuchar come out. So they, they really do all support each other.
They do.
So on shore, right. So somebody will come and support us for sure.
Is that a day-long thing?
No, so that would just probably be a couple of hours.
Okay.
Couple of hours, so we'll.
Six to, I got, I, I just threw six to nine on the calendar, you know, six to eight, that type of.
Yeah, we'll look to set, we'll look to set a time after we speak to MASs to see.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put this back on for the August meeting just to confirm, to shore everything up.
Yep.
Great. All right. The, so the next meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is set for Monday, August 26th, 2024. It'll be at 5:30 right here in the Dartmouth High School Media Center. At this time, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of an update on, bless you, pending DEA grievance in legal matters.
So we'll, and I'll come back.
Not to reconvene, not to reconvene. Thank you, Mr. Newns. Motion by Mr. Newns.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ammaral on the motion, any further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Gentner.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Beth Coughlin.
Yes.
Mary Beckwith.
Yes.
John Newns.
Yes.
Kathleen Ammaral.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.